All right, let's get started. All right, welcome to the 4:00 PM joint work session of September 16th, 2025. Please note, all council members are present. However, it looks like, no.
Angela.
There she is. However, Angela is walking down the hallway right now. So we are all present. Just real quick, anybody have any questions about our, our city council meeting? We have the rezone at eight, or 853 Seventh Street. Joe's gonna do that. Any questions about that? Okay, and then the proposed West Ogden 24th Street interchange plan. Michaela, is that still the, the case? Okay. And then depending on... Oh, that's it. Wow. He didn't get turned there. Great. All right. We have a few. We have a few things on our, I know, right? We have a few things on our, our work session tonight, but we also have, depending on if we decide to go into a joint work session, or a, geez, a closed session. That will also happen right following the work session, so. Any other questions? I'm gonna turn that over to Janine real quick.
Just a reminder, a joint work session with planning commission tomorrow night. Dinner starts at five, the meeting starts at 5:30. If you are not gonna be there, gonna be late, I appreciate it if you let us know, just so we know whether to count on you or not. Well, thank you. Right here.
All right, any other quick business before we get started? Okay. Then Brandon, come on up to talk to us about the, yay, the front runner station area plan. I told Byron that this was happening tonight. Yeah. He was excited.
Excited too.
Since I've heard a few of them, I can't wait to hear ours.
Excellent. That's what today I'd like to review with the city council, the front runner stationary plan. This one's a little different than other stationary plans. This one's called prior actions. Not explaining why that is. So the state legislature adopted House Bill 462, requiring cities to adopt stationary plan for any station. It's a commuter rail station, track station, or very light rail, or bus rapid transit station that's, that has a dedicated lane. So we have six stations in Ogden that are required to have a stationary plan. So today my focus is on the front runner, uh, station area. So you can see the, the biggest circle. And there's a reason why those circles are different sizes. So the commuter rail station or front runner and a track station require the station plan area to be a half mile radius. Whereas the bus rapid transit stations are required to be a quarter mile. Thus the difference between the, the sizes. So like I said today, our focus is on just the fronters, stationary plan. So there are our four main objectives that the House Bill 462 this requires. And I'll just read those really quickly. So the first one is to increase the availability and affordability of housing, including moderate income housing. Second is sustainable environment, environmental conditions. All these plans meet the object, the four objectives that are required as part of the city council plan?
Brandon, can I ask a stupid question? And maybe even answered it. On, on our, you know, you've, you've said about the five, the, the six plans, the six places, stations. What, what makes it constitute a station other than it being a stop? Because we have other stops that, that don't hit that, and I'm just, maybe you answered that. I was thinking about something else, but.
So House Bill 462 says that it's public fixed gateway, public transit station. Really what it's saying is, for example, if you have a commuter rail, have that dedicated rail line. So that is required to have a stationary plan. You have a light rail or tracks that have a dedicated rail to that, that station. If it's serviced by that dedicated rail, it's required to have a stationary plan. And then for BRT stations, so OGX, anytime you have a dedicated lane, then that station is required to have a stationary plan. So we have, yeah, we have other stations.
But they're not on a dedicated lane. That's, okay, perfect. Thank you.
That's why we have six instead of that number of stations that have them there.
And so, so these other surrounding communities that, that only have a front runner stop? They've got the half mile and that's what, that's all they got, right? Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay. So my question is, do all of our previous plans conform to the, to this House bill? Is it 462? So do they, do they align with that? Or are there any changes that we need to make in your planning to bring things into compliance?
Yeah, we don't, so going through each of those plans, they, the idea is that they promote those four objectives. So, and I can go back. So yeah, all these plans promote, for example, more housing around the front runners. Sustainable environmental conditions, so. As far as transportation, with the having housing near transportation areas is unequitable. We also have rail connections, walkways that are part of this area. That also is part of that environmental portion. Also, these plans also promote recreation, retail, all of those education. And then we, we also have the OGX, we have other bus lines that connect into the front runner area. So all these plans, like I said, promote those, those four objectives. So we don't necessarily need to change anything in those plans to receive certification. We just need to show that we are actively making progress on those plans.
Awesome, and I can see how four of those steps are in the, uh, front runner documentation that you sent to us earlier, so, yeah, thank you.
Brandon, at some point, did the language within the House bill change with regard to how you define a stop? It seems like back in the day, it was a fixed station. So all the stuff coming up 25th Street, I thought we planned around a, a quarter mile, yeah?
Yeah, so the, um, yeah, the Ogden onboard plan does have plans for other stations. But the House Bill 462, just as the fixed gateway public transit station is required to have a stationary.
Okay, so the Ogden onboard, um, planning around those stops was not required by the state? Okay, thank you for the clarification on that. I mean, and I'm glad we've got plans around those stops. What we're required to do. Okay, thank you.
No, no, not your fault at all, not your fault at all.
Okay. So Brandon, my question is on the increase of, of availability and affordable housing. How is that measured? I mean, seems like increase, you add one unit and you've increased it. I mean, what, what is the definition of that?
They didn't really, there's nothing in House Bill 462 that necessarily lays that out. They are encouraging, um, HTRZs, so housing transit and, I forgot the rest of it, uh, reinvestment zone. So the state is providing incentives for property owners or developers to build more housing around the transit stations. So because of that incentive, it's likely that, yeah, that more housing will be built in those areas. I know the Union Station neighborhood plan area is an area that we're looking at to do an HTRZ. HTRZs do require, uh, density of 50 units per acre. So if, if a city wants to qualify for the HTRZ, that's one of the, the minimums.
Just kind of looking down the road at the other option, other areas that we, you know, you're, you're going to bring to us already, but there's already, you know, with student housing, is that already taken into account? Or is it, that's a baseline, you don't include that in calculation?
I'm not sure how to answer that. I would say, I'm, I can't speak for the state, but I would say the state is probably encouraging more housing than what is there now. I definitely think if there's existing, um, multifamily housing or student housing, that, that should meet the requirement. I mean, really, the state wants cities to invest in the areas surrounding the stations. So yeah, we may have a lot of uses that are already there, like, uh, several of the Weaver State stations, you know, are almost built out. So there's not a lot we can do on those, uh, stops. But we can definitely kind of think outside of the box.
And then, and then three of those stations, there is decent amount of overlap, at least.
Yes.
Two of them almost really close.
Right.
But then 36th Street to Weaver State Central, there's a little bit as well. So I wonder if, as something is developed in an overlap zone, does, can it count towards both? Or is it, you can only count it towards one or the other?
Yeah, great point. I mean, we don't have to go into that much detail.
Okay.
To get certified. But we do have to show, like, because the, the OGX stations are so close, we, we basically count it as like a corridor, like a stationary plan corridor. So, uh, on the maps that we'll present to you, it shows, yeah, basically, uh, a corridor plan as opposed to just each individual stationary plan. That doesn't, yeah, necessarily mean that. Oh, I think, yeah, I think the, if it's in both areas, it should count.
For both.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, well, I guess we'll learn more.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we don't go into that much detail, but.
Mainly talking about the fronter. I just was kind of curious about, you know, looking down the road a little bit.
Yeah. Yeah, we are a little different. I mean, other areas that are not built out like Ogden, have a lot more oppo, or opportunity for more housing. Where, you know, like even on, we have three stations on Weaver State's campus. And, um, yeah, some of those areas, there's not a lot of, uh, change that we can do, so. But we do lay, we lay that out in the, the future land use map in the, the stationary plan, so.
There's not a lot of use you can do on any of those Harrison stops at all. They.
Well, yeah, it would require redevelopment.
Do they?
Yeah. So.
So, um, any other questions? I was gonna just, um, this HB 462 is what I was trying to get people to understand around the Union Station about a year and a half ago that this was coming. Thus far, we have had, I don't know, 45, I think, certified at this point, I, maybe 50.
Yeah, that sounds right.
Um, and there's about 50,000 units, housing units planned around, um, station areas right now across, across the Wasatch Front. So, uh, the bill is actually doing what the bill was intended to do. And that was really tried to get us to look at housing around these station areas.
So Marsha, do you know, um, each time I go down on the front runner and get off at North Temple, it's amazing to me, the amount of housing that has gone up. And now it's jumping the tracks via a pedestrian footbridge to the west. And more is going up on, on the west side of the rail lines. Is that all as a result of a stationary plan that was created, uh, down there? Do you know that has stimulated all that?
I don't know what, I don't know what chicken came first.
Yeah, okay.
They, I know that they recognize that, um, tran, uh, transit is, is important and so.
Yeah, and to a lesser extent, all the communities down the line between here and Salt Lake, too.
Layton's doing the same thing. You're seeing a lot of it happen.
Yep.
Now we need to figure out how to do that.
Sounds good. All right, well, thank you.
Thanks.
Yep, and then I guess this will be coming forward in the next couple of weeks, so thank you.
Great, thanks. So Brandon, do you have to present that then at WFC then?
Yeah.
Okay. After it comes to us, great. All right, proposed miss, middle income housing program guidelines. Jeremy, welcome.
Okay, hello everyone. Taking me talking about a new program, uh, this is the Middle Income Housing Program Guidelines. Before I begin, I just wanted to, um, set this up. Remind everyone, when we get new programs that come our way, we always look at them in the context of the Quality Neighborhood Initiative, which defaults as our housing strategy. And that's, of course, used to make sure we're providing a broad range of, broad range of choices across the spectrum of affordability. Right, so these guidelines are geared up, um, specifically for people that are in the middle income, which I'll get into fine a little more in a moment. But here's, now this, let me click on the right thing here. Oh, sorry, there we go. So what is it? Uh, when we look at this, uh, it's basically a new program that HUD has recently developed, uh, that gives an incentive to developers to provide housing opportunities to middle income households. And what this does is give them some extended financing for their development. And these are geared towards market rate rental projects. And the way it works is the project receives loan, additional loan funds from HUD. And what they have to agree to do is, um, guarantee that 50% of the units will be rented, uh, at 120%, or below 120% AMI. And they have to comply for 10 years on that. It's non-renewable after that 10-year period. Uh, the city's role is that they certify annually that, uh, the developer is complying with that requirement. And so what this looks like, uh, what is middle income? And that's the big question. When we look at 120% AMI, what is that? So the way it's broken down is, um, in this chart here, if you were to look at, uh, to say a two-person household, 120% of the current annual median income would be $115,680. That household cannot earn more than that and qualify for this. It also has a rent cap on this. In that same scenario, the cap would be $2,892 per month is what they would not be able to rent over that amount. So as we analyze this and looked at it, uh, we did our own analysis and were able to determine what the current rents are, um, for market rates. And as you see on the, the next table, a two-bedroom, uh, newer apartment in, the city is currently renting for around 1,600, um, slightly above uh, range there, uh, but still well under the required, uh, cap through this program. So by analyzing this and going through it, there isn't, um, we look at it as basically a really useful tool to developers who want, need that additional financing so they can guarantee amenities and make sure they're getting a real quality housing product. Um, and still doesn't, um, take this out of a market rate scenario. So they're well under the quota and able to receive that additional HUD financing. Um, we had some questions about really what the city's involvement would be, uh, in this going forward. And the guidelines outlay this, and there's examples of that in your, your pack, as it show what those applications are. And they're really pretty simple, actually. Most of the heavy lifting is done by the developer. They round up the rent rolls and they have to deliver those annually. City staff would then review them to make sure they line up with the HUD published, um, uh, median income, annual median income. Make sure that they are not, uh, or they're in compliance with those amounts that they agreed on. And then they're just issued a letter from the city saying that they're compliant. So there's not, not a lot of work on the city standpoint, so that wasn't really a concern. But we felt it did give an opportunity to, um, to help the, help these projects deliver in a quality manner and still, um, give some benefit to those in that middle income. And these are folks generally that make too much money to qualify for, for affordable housing, but maybe, uh, not enough in some situations to, you know, deal with our current homes and buy a home in the current market. So we, uh, found it was a good, the guidelines are good and the, the program's new and still kind of figuring itself out. But, uh, from what we have, we, uh, recommended that we move forward with this. So we'll be presenting that in a few weeks. Happy to answer any questions you have on it.
Go ahead.
I'm just curious, you know, you're in touch with the construction marketplace and builders and developers. Is there an interest in this?
Yeah, so this, this actually was brought to our attention for a moment from a developer, DeBray's, yes, and that's the Rivers Edge Development. So they're the ones that brought this to our attention and they made application for this program. Like I said, it is new, so that's really the first we're hearing about it. But we thought it would be important, if there are others who are interested in doing it, that we have some guidelines set up. So we know, um, how to address that as they're brought forward and, and we would look at those on a case by case.
Yeah, thanks for bringing this forward in this form in advance of more of it showing up after having experienced it with the Rivers Edge project.
Yeah, absolutely.
Does it have to be apartments or can it be, uh, rent, rental houses?
I'm only, because it's a 50% of the unit, so I don't know how that would break down in, yeah, you're talking about like a rental townhome situation or something? I think that would probably fine if they did that. I mean, um, the guidelines really are geared, when you're reading, they're geared towards an apartment. But, uh, there probably is room for any rental product, I would guess.
Fourplex or something, I was just trying to think of.
Yeah, possibly.
Did I, did I hear you say that there were certain amenities that would need to be required with the development?
No, no, so.
Missed it, oh, yeah.
And this was, um, a lot to do with just the application that was made. We wanted to make sure that the development went forth with the, the right amount of amenities. So if, because construction costs have gotten so high, interest rates are higher, it's becoming harder and harder for some of these projects to pencil. If this allows them to get a bigger loan to, so that they can provide some of the more, the quality amenities that come along with some of these. If this allows them to get a bigger loan to, so that they can provide some of the more, the quality amenities that come along with some of these, uh, projects, you know, we definitely would encourage that, um, so that, you know, these, when they're built, they're here for a really long time. We want to make sure they're built to a standard that's above and beyond just the minimum.
So it's not a HUD, HUD requirement, but nothing we're looking for?
Nope. We, we would just look at it as if it helps them provide that high quality, then that would be a good thing.
I have a question for you, Jeremy.
Sure.
You've answered this before and it's just not in my memory bank right now, so.
No problem.
My question is, what, what is the saturation point of apartments in our community? Is it, and, and your projections for the future? What is that? Uh, how does that all play into this kind of development?
Yeah, well, that's, um, that's a big question, Sean. That's, um, probably bigger than I'm able to answer at this point. Saturation is kind of a, it's a moving target a little bit. So we're currently always analyzing to see what the vacancy rates are and that's just playing out. I think we saw a huge uptick a few years ago, a couple of years ago with apartment applications coming online. That since has dried up a bit. It's just become very expensive to, to build. And so we've seen less of that unless their, um, applications are coming along with some tax credits and those type of things. To my knowledge, there are, there are vacancies and the, uh, the demand has dipped a little bit for now. But the projections are that we'll need a lot more of all, all kinds of units, um, in the future. We look through the twenty fifty projection, the population is scheduled to increase and it will require, uh, all sorts of housing.
So this is not retroactive. This has to be for any new applicants moving from when this is approved and going forward, right?
Correct. Yeah. This wouldn't apply to any existing apartment buildings out there. It would only be for those who are applying for financing for the actual construction.
Right. Cause, okay.
Yeah.
The others already have their financing all lined up, so that's kind of a moot point.
Yep.
Okay.
Where do you get those numbers? I just, out of curiosity.
Which numbers are you talking about?
Rent, bridge rent rates and.
So there was a survey done recently, um, I think it was a Concord Group produced that. They did a big survey of all the rents in, um, Weber and part of Davis County, I think, and produce those. And so we did our own in-house, just, um, looking up all the local apartments that we know, just to verify that, you know, not just what's happening in the county, but specifically what's happening in Ogden, and we're able to, uh, feel real comfortable that that's what we're, what we're seeing.
All right. Any other questions?
Okay.
All right.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Well, next on the agenda is, um, the Youth Council Bylaws Amendments and, and, it just says and. Oh, council comments, sorry.
We won't be there. Okay.
You know, Jeff?
Okay. Um, good evening, council. I, one of my responsibilities as a communications director, other duties is assigned, right, is, uh, to, uh, be the advisor for the Ogden City Youth Council. And pardon me as I multitask here, make sure that everything is being shared. Okay, great. So I have with me some, some members of the Ogden City Youth Council who are in, uh, council leadership. Aleah Salgado, who is our, uh, chair, and, um, Victoria Martinez Lopez. Lopez, I see. I should, I should just committed, um, who is our, our vice chair. And then Jaime Jimenez, who is our, our service officer for, for the council. So, um, I will go over the proposed bylaws, uh, the proposed amendments, proposed amendments to the bylaws. And, um, and then I'll turn it over to the youth council to kind of go over what we've done so far and what, uh, we hope to do throughout, through, throughout the year. And then we'd be happy to, uh, take any questions that you may have. So not a ton of changes to the bylaws, um, just some, uh, for ease of language, we're going to change the, the titles of chairperson and vice chairperson to chair and vice chair respectively. Just moves off the tongue a lot easier and, uh, um, just makes sense. So we made that change throughout the, throughout the bylaws. And, um, uh, an incident that we had this year with the leadership election led us to, uh, this decision to where if any one youth city council member applies for one leadership position and they are the only one applying for that position, they are that, they will, uh, be assigned to that leadership role and be removed from consideration for the other leadership roles that they may have put in for. So we, we added that in there. We didn't, um, we, you know, we've never had that situation, but we had it this past year, and so we, uh, wrote that into the bylaws. So, uh, with, yes.
So just for the mechanics of it all.
Sure.
So are they filing ahead of time? Are they kind of listing their interests ahead of time, ahead of the meeting? Is that what, is that the way it works?
Yes. So ahead of the meeting, I, I, I send them a copy of the bylaws, which includes a description of each leadership, leadership position. And then when they come to the election meeting, um, before that, they will have submitted a form where they, they show the, the different positions that they'd be interested in, in serving in.
Could the, in, I'm, I'm just thinking of other circumstances where leadership is.
Sure.
Chosen and.
Yeah.
Kind of wondering if, uh, if, if people can announce their interest at the meeting. Is that something that can happen?
So that is, that is part of it as, as well. So, um, one thing that we do in between is, um, we go around the table and before we vote, we go around the table and, uh, each youth, uh, council member, uh, says what positions that they're up for and why they think they'd be good at either of those.
Okay.
So it is kind of announced. There's not a ton of time, uh, between, uh, cause we like to get leadership established quickly so we can get rolling. But, I mean, we could at the first meeting say this is, you know, what we have and, and what's available. And so we could do something like that. I'm not sure what, maybe what you're looking for specifically, but.
Well, I'm not suggesting anything different than what you're doing. I'm just trying to understand what it is.
Okay.
You know, I, it, it, you know, it sounds like what you're just doing is if there's only one, you're just gonna, they're gonna win by acclamation and call good and away you go.
Yep.
But I just didn't know if there was any other opportunity for, uh, late entries or maybe even other peers saying, hey, you know, I think that person would be good.
Well, funny you say that. So, um, we had one position that was unfilled and we had somebody just say, I'll do it. So great. So we, we put them in that. So we had something kind of like that, but it's a, it's a good point. Yeah.
I just, yeah, I'm not trying to change what they're doing.
You're fine.
I think they ought to do what they want to do, but.
I appreciate it. Sure. So you have the switch on the right side. Right side. There you go. Yep. Yay.
So are we talking just chair and vice chair or are there other positions available?
Oh, yeah. There are definitely, there are several positions available. Um, there is service officer, social officer, public relations officer, treasurer, recorder. Yeah, we have, we have a whole slew of them for sure. Anything else before we move on? Great. Okay. With that, I will turn it over to Aleah, I believe. Yes. Uh, kind of going over the, the tours that we will go on and some that we did last year.
Yes. So we haven't gone to any tours yet this year, but we do plan to go on quite a few. Coming up this next week, we have the water treatment plant tour, um, which will be very exciting. Next month, we have the, a tour of the Union Station. And then undecided dates, we have a tour of the public safety building and the municipal building. We are also looking for more opportunities to tour local facilities. And, um, last year we toured the Weber Elections Office, and so we are contemplating whether to do that again or not this year. And so it's just a way for the youth to kind of explore, um, facilities in Ogden City and Ogden City jobs.
A local officials day.
Sorry. Is something we do every year. Um, we had a great representation last year, as you can see from, uh, the photo, and, um, it, it's just a great opportunity for, uh, the Ogden youth to learn about how the state legislature works and meet representatives, um, who represent them at that level, um, in Salt Lake. They get to meet other youth councils as well and participate in, last year was a mock debate, which was, uh, really interesting to, to watch and really fun to see. And, um, usually at the end of the day, we'll, we'll have a luncheon and we'll hear from, uh, the governor's office in one way or another. Governor Cox himself spoke a couple of years ago and it was Lieutenant Governor, um, Deidre Henderson, uh, the year, uh, just last year. So, yeah, always, always, this is always a, a fun event to, to look forward to each year. And with that, I'll turn it over to our service officer.
For service projects and events, uh, I have spoken with Ginger about them. I have not received any further news about them, but we do plan on giving out dinners during the holidays such as Thanksgiving and Christmas. What I hope for us at, at the Ogden City Youth Council is not to just help people, but also learn to like gain more experience within helping our own community in different ways. We are, we are also doing the My Impact Challenge. The Bill of Rights Institute National Civics Contest, I have not gained further information about that. But yet again, I and Ginger will be looking more into it. And hopefully we'll be doing it whether soon or within a new time period.
And just to tag along on that, the, the My Impact Challenge was canceled last year and I reached out to see if it was happening this year and I haven't heard anything. So that is kind of up in the air and in limbo. Um, but regardless, we will have a service project that we will develop together as a youth council that we will have done by the end of the year. And then, yes, we always look forward to those community dinners, um, working with, um, the recreation department to do so. Uh, last year, uh, we made hygiene kits for the lantern house. And, um, so that, that was the service project that we, that we did last year. Social activities. Vice chair.
Okay. So our focus for social activities this year is, um, on bonding experiences and camaraderie. Last week, right? It was last week, uh, a couple of us for our social bonding. Um, we went to the Masha White, the indoor soccer field. Um, we played some games and being bagged, um, it was pretty fun and the point of social, social activities is to bond with, um, our fellow like members of the OCYC club. And also I think it's a great experience to just learn who our, um, advisors are. And, um, in the future, we plan to do more just so we can connect. And that way like our relationship isn't just like hi every once in a month and we get to know who they are. And that way we can express our ideas more firmly. Yeah.
Also, you were the only one to beat me in Connect Four, and it was a fluke.
Yeah. And I also learned that nobody can beat Brandon at Connect Four, so.
My door's open. So, so one new thing that we, we are work, that we're trying to incorporate this year is working with, uh, the Governing Youth Council, which is sponsored by the Weber Morgan Health Department. So far, they had an event over the summer, which I forwarded to the, the youth council. I don't know if anyone went. I meant to follow up. But they had a two-day, pretty intensive, like leadership, like local government leadership camp. But they, they made that to avail, they made that available to us. And then, um, we, we will also participate in a legislative dinner on October twenty-seventh where, um, we'll, we'll have dinner with a couple of, I'm not sure who specifically, um, but I, there's a few leaders from around, around the broader area, you know, Weber, Morgan Counties that, um, the youth will be able to ask questions and, and have conversations with. So I'm excited to be working with, um, the county in that respect and, um, hopefully adds a new dimension, new layer to, uh, to the youth council.
So one.
Uh, one thing that we would like to improve, uh, both this year and years moving forward is our attendance and enrollment efforts. Um, and so, um, often we don't have as many, um, people enroll into the youth council as we would like. And so some ideas that we have moving forward, um, are to make flyers or posters, um, giving information about the youth council and to, um, kind of spread them out around schools in the Ogden area and other areas where, uh, you, members of, uh, the youth could see them as well. Uh, we have an Instagram page and we would like to make more use of that Instagram page to kind of more publicly announce what we are doing, um, to the community. And finally, um, we would like to perhaps make a video, um, explaining what the youth council does and kind of also spread that around to hopefully gain more members of our youth council.
I think it's really important that all those efforts be youth-driven because I can only convince the youth so much. It means so much more coming from their peers than some guy in his late thirties trying to get him to sign up for some government thing. So, um, yeah, I'm really excited about their, their efforts to try to get more people signed up. And, um, with that, uh, we will take any questions that you may have.
How many members are on the youth, youth council currently?
This year we have thirteen. Nine from Ogden High, two from Ben Lomond, one from New Ames and one from Venture Academy.
Okay, great. I just want to commend the three of you for coming this evening. Thanks for taking time away from your friends and your family and mostly studies, right? Homework.
Definitely.
Two out of three are smiling. I may, I feel a little nervous about your homework for tonight. So anyway, thank you for coming and, uh, thanks for taking a risk and stepping outside of your comfort zone. You know, you're, you're away from your friends and your school building and the activities that you're familiar with and really placing yourself in something that's new. You'll learn something. And the water treatment plant and things like that, uh, will open your eyes to how the greater community works. And I, I really, uh, commend you for stepping out of your comfort zone and trying something new. And in addition to some of the things that you listed to attract more membership, the most powerful catalyst in gaining membership is each of you. If you go to your friends one-on-one, you'll have a much better turnout than anything else you might do. So share this with your friends and invite them to join you and tell them a little bit about why you enjoy it and, um, invite them to join. They look at you as leaders and they'll follow along with your invitation. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Brandon, I have a question for you. I, um, I, I was a little perplexed that, you know, last year we had, we had a really heavy weight from New Ames. And now we have a really heavy weight from Ogden.
Yeah.
What happened?
It's a great question. I, I wish I knew. Um, I don't know how the word got to New Ames, um, and how that drove so much. But I, I do know, um, when I went to visit Ogden, that's, that's when we, I should rephrase that, when I went to visit Ogden High School, that, that led to a lot of, um, enrollment from, from, uh, that school. Um, and we tried to do the same at Ben Lomond. I went to Ben Lomond a couple of times and, um, we got two this year, which again is double from the year before. So, but, um, so we, um, yeah, that's why we think that, you know, the kids are the ones that needed to be driving this because it's going to be more impactful, but.
So this, so the student government, uh, departments, are, are they the ones you're reaching out to or?
Yeah, well, not reaching out to me per se. I'm reaching out to them and saying, can, yeah, uh-huh, yeah, absolutely. Those ones, uh, we've seen a high success rate with. Yeah, for sure.
And I know we, we've tried to get, uh, students that, that weren't the, the, the students that already did everything.
Right.
You know, I, I don't know how to state that, but.
Right.
And, and maybe that, that's not the people that go to student government because they're probably already in student government.
Right.
Doing all that stuff. Uh, I was just, I'm just thinking.
No, yeah, I appreciate it. Yeah, it's, it's, you know, we, we've given our information to, you know, uh, social studies teachers since this is up their alley and, um, uh, try to coordinate, but it, and that's, that's one, and it's, it's been harder to get in those classrooms than it has been student government classrooms. It's not to say we won't stop trying though. So, and then I think with, in addition with these, these.
Maybe we gotta ask these students, what is it that motivated you to, to get involved?
Sure, for each of you, yeah.
My dad told me about this opportunity and he thought it'd be really good for me because I like to push myself out of my comfort zone and to try new things. And so I applied and it has exceeded my expectations.
Way to go, dad. All right.
Do you know how he heard about?
I'll have to ask him.
I'm actually in student government and, um, I joined my sophomore year. I'm a senior, so I learned from it from like.
So I learned from it from like the other student government classmates and I'm pretty sure she was chair, it was Grace Malin. So I just remember her talking about her experience and it was fun. And then my brother joins. I was like, yeah, I'll join too. And it's been fun, you know, it's a great opportunity for me to learn, so, yeah.
Good, thank you. My father also brought this opportunity up to me. He found a pamphlet, I'm pretty sure, or a poster about it in the mail. He brought it up to me and considering I wasn't doing, I wasn't doing much during the summer. I didn't have much to do. I just decided to join to have something, to engage myself in.
Maybe we sell this idea of this is what a great thing to put on a scholarship application, you know. Those are the kind of things I think we need to promote is they need to see what's in it for them a little bit before they, before they want to get involved.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. And I've also written a couple of letters of recommendation that students have included with their, their applications and happy to do that for you moving forward. And maybe that's something at the beginning we say, because we, you know, we try to tout it as learning more about local government and, you know, exploring job opportunities. But I think a more immediate reward would probably be a good thing to place at the beginning. And I will say too, speaking about how, you know, they probably got it with the At Your Service newsletter. We just did a, an article for the new newspaper that the city is putting out. But instead of me just saying, hey, you should come to the youth council and here's why, we did kind of a questionnaire with all the youth council. What does it mean to be a teen in Ogden? Why do you like being on the youth council? And so it's their words in that article instead of mine. So hopefully that will be, have a positive outcome as well.
I'd volunteer to write some of those letters of recommendations also.
Noted.
Have we made a presentation to the school board or school district?
No.
To present this and ask for, I.
Not a bad idea.
I was spending a lot of time at Chad's Sprinkler Supply and I ran into one of the principals there and I started talking to him and it just came up. And he's like, oh, and I said, do you have any students or have you sent any students down to our, and he's like, I don't even know about it. So I think maybe, maybe present it to the school district.
Yeah.
Board and then let them kind of take it out, let them do some work.
Great idea.
I think it'd be awesome if you guys presented to the school district. I think that'd be cool.
Yeah, reach out, make it happen. Yeah, I can reach out to Jer and see about making that happen, for sure.
Brandon, I just had another comment too, and that is you asked for ideas of tours and educational things. Our institutions of higher education are always interesting. I don't know if that appeals to you or not. But I kind of always look at our community from the economic development side and also from the business side of things. It'd be very interesting for you to go out to Ogden Business Depot.
Yeah.
Talk to Aaron Ostad, who runs that out there. Have him set something up for you and you can go into some of the plants that are there. And I'll just share one with you. I could share quite a few, but one of the kind of cool ones is Yaya Foods. And they make this oat milk.
Oatly.
And that's pretty fascinating how they've grown so incredibly. And so that's kind of a neat one too. But Aaron Ostad is also the chair of the Chamber this year and it might be interesting for you to, to take a look at what the Chamber of Commerce does. Or even in Ogden City, get some ideas of things that are going on with the Suaro, Suarez, what is it? Suaro Business Center? On, yeah, Swazal, thank you. There's our, there's our member of that board here. So, yeah, those kind of things would be really interesting to do too, just to have a perspective of things that you can do in the future as you look forward to employment and what opportunities are out there. First, education though, right? And then second, the career, so.
Yeah, that's great. I made a note of that. I think that's a great idea to get out there. Because we go out there to decorate the trailer, but that's about it, so.
There's a lot happening out there.
There is.
Business is booming out in that area, so, pretty cool.
Ogden Nature Center, there's all sorts of things out there.
I just was gonna say, I love hearing the chair say that it has far exceeded your expectations. But as you guys consider, you know, your work and what you're doing on this youth city council, if there's a way for the council to provide any more support or help, you know, let us know. Because I'd be interested to hear how we could enhance the experience, whether it's coming and playing checkers, I don't know, or connect, connect the dots or whatever you were playing. We're happy to.
It's Connect Four, come on.
Connect Four, okay, that's it.
All right, any other comments? Good job, you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
On the, on it right now?
Uh, yes.
And how many, like, how many are we trying to get or we? Would be a good number?
That's, that's a good question. I haven't really thought about that. Because we're just trying to get what we can. So, that's a great, that's the question, right? That's really what should be the determining factor. Well, I mean, the struggle is, yeah, we had 13 show up, but we had nine at the first meeting, then we had five at the social activity. And so we'll kind of see how that goes throughout the year, but we rarely have 100% attendance, which is something we're trying to work on. But, so, yeah, I don't know what that number would be. I know, maybe if I let you win.
Nice.
It's true. In, in three moves too, or four moves.
Hey, food is a, I don't know what your budget looks like, but food is a great motivator for attendance.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. We, uh.
Get the pizzas.
We got a, we got a snack supply. We're kind of holding back pizza a little bit. A lot of times we have a lot of extra. We don't want to waste a lot of food. But, yeah, so we got, we got a lot of snacks that are, you know, non-perishable. At least you have expiration dates. That'll be longer than, you know, day of. So, yeah, we're trying to extend that. But, yeah, well, I'm, and I've, I'm trying to give them as well more leeway to make the decisions about those kinds of things, like what do we want to have at youth city council meetings? And what activities do we want to do? What's the big service project that we're going to do? I want to put it in their hands so that they can learn those leadership skills and have something to point to at the end of the year that, you know, they had a significant hand in planning and executing. How's that for a tangent?
Good.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thanks. All right. Next on our agenda is council comments. Any council comments? Other than what we've already commented on? All right, we're going to move to the redevelopment agency meeting. Any board business before we start?
Could I make one comment, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
And this is in the city council comments, not in the redevelopment agency stuff.
We're already past it.
I know. I'm always about a step behind, because it takes my synapses just a little bit longer to fire than other people, I guess. I just want to express my personal thanks to all of you for your support on the, on the, the 952 Childs Avenue thing. I just, I just feel really passionate about that and very supportive and kind of renewed my faith in everybody that we've passed that. And it just, I'm very, very grateful. So thanks again for your vision and insight and I think it'll be a great thing moving forward too, so thank you.
Great, yeah. I agree. Any other comments? All right. Moving along then. Wait, give Sean a minute. Okay, just kidding.
Chair, make a motion that we adjourn into a closed session for all of the some items listed. We can do that now in our work sessions, so make it that motion.
Second. I'll second.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Hayer, second by Councilmember Richie to move into a closed session. This is a voice vote. Nope, this is a roll call vote. I'm sorry, all in favor, geez, oh Pete, let's try that again. This is a roll call vote.
All in favor, one at a time.
Yep. Board Member Blair.
Aye.
Board Member Chubberka. Sit down. Sit down. Board Member Graff.
Aye.
Board Member Myers.
Aye.
Board Member Richie.
Aye.
Vice Chair Hayer, Chair White. Aye, that passes and we will move into a closed session. We will adjourn from the closed session and then pending on time, we'll move into the council meeting.